The September 13 Wichita Board of Education meeting is now called to order. I want to welcome everyone present and everyone in the audience tonight. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district's district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. We are truly thankful that you have chose to spend this evening with us. And if would you join me now in a moment of silence? We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance from and led by the West High School J R O T C Cadets.
Color guard, oh. Right face. Present arms. Order arms. Sir, permission to post the colors?
He may post the colors.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors, colors, sir, march.
And let's give the West High Junior R O T C Cadets a round of applause. A great honor to be post our colors and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance two days after the 20th anniversary of September 11th, so we appreciate their effort in being here. Patrick, first item, please.
First item, under reports, Superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
Hello, Board of Education. My name is Sophia Dunkelberger and I am class of 2023.
And my name is Aunt Ty, class of 2022, and we are both representative from East High School.
Today, we are here to inform you of topics we discussed at our Super SAC meeting with Superintendent Alicia Thompson and other representatives from our Wichita High Schools.
As the Super SAC team discussed, we realized COVID is affecting each of each of our schools negatively. Dr. Redia Redbird Pediatric reached out to me and we believe it would be wise to encourage all students that are eligible to get vaccinated in our district. I believe there should be an incentive or a more accessible way for our students to be vaccinated. She has proposed that students who has a higher rate of vaccination at their school be rewarded as extra days off or be put in a raffle to receive a scholarship. There are money found for initiative, businesses, and individuals who will support. And scholarship will be offered to those who are willing to protect their family and friends.
In many classes, the safety and cleaning protocols are not as strict as they used to be. The Super SAC team believes it would be best to begin cleaning workspaces between classes, cleaning equipment that is being used by multiple students, and to sanitize students' hands as they enter each classroom. We also believe students should not be returned to class after being tested for COVID. This could be very dangerous if the student tests positive for COVID and is sitting as a positive case close to their classmates. Students should be instructed to wait in a designated area until they get a confirmed positive or negative test.
As more and more students are testing positive for COVID at our schools, we believe we should be encouraging students to limit physical contact with each other, as well as encouraging kids to take advantage of eating outdoors and spread apart from other groups in order to limit contact without face masks.
We also need to have viable options for students being quarantined at home. Teachers must have a Microsoft Teams call going for said student and be able to get the student all the assignments and makeup work they need in their time of absence. Students should also be responsible for treating their technology with respect and should be taught how to take care of something as valuable as a laptop.
Dress code in many schools is being enforced more than masking, and we find these actions can be very harmful to young girls' mental health and well-being. However, the mental health and overall moral for all students is very low. Schools should be implement more group-building activities, brain breaks, and equal opportunities so that every student can feel that school is a welcoming and open environment. Teachers teachers should be able to form appropriate relationships with their students and make their classrooms an encouraging and engaging environment.
As our sports seasons are starting, we believe all indoor sports should be required to mask so that our teams don't have COVID outbreaks or have to quarantine for their entire season. Because athletes are heavily breathing while participating in their sports, masks would greatly reduce the spread during practices and games. Spectators should also be required to wear masks at all games in order to reduce spread between students and families in the bleachers.
The parking lots at many of our schools are congested and are making it difficult to arrive at and leave at school. Parents are blocking entrances and exits as they wait for their students, and we believe the parking lot should mainly be reserved for the students and staff of our schools. Parent drivers are making it difficult for student drivers to park and arrive to class on time.
Our bus routes need to be expanded as well and be given proper safety protocols as students lack both COVID safety and traffic safety on the buses.
Thank you for letting us come and discuss some topics we felt were prominent in our district.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate you sending us that those recommendations ahead of time, and we truly appreciate that. And for the audience, again, that's this is a report from the Superintendent's Students' Advisory Council, Super SAC. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And I was remiss in reading the names of the cadets. I'd like to just take a second to read their names, just in case their parents are watching, and maybe they'd like to hear their name read as well. That was Cadet Corporal Seth Core, Cadet Major Louise Urbana, Cadet Captain Kenan Thompson, Cadet Sergeant Sergeant Major Isaac Brayham. And again, we thank West High, and we also thank the students from East High, the Super SAC. Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under good news, Education Edge Classroom Mini Grant Winners.
Good evening, President Reeser and Superintendent Thompson and members of the board. It is great to celebrate a couple of items of good news for us this evening. As as Patrick said, yes, the the Education Edge recently handed out $1,500 grants to 21 teachers and certified staff to support cool projects that are going on in their classrooms. I'd like to invite Holly Wilson down from from up there, our grant supervisor, to be able to tell you more about what those support.
Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the board. I'm honored to be here to recognize our 2021-2022 Education Edge Classroom Mini Grant winners. These 21 staff submitted phenomenal grant applications that will give students their edge and ignite learning in their classrooms and schools. In 2003, the Board of Education established the Wichita Public Schools Education Edge Gift Funds to provide support for classroom mini-grants, athletics, and fine arts activities. This unique partnership with the Wichita Community Foundation allows all gifts received by Education Edge to be devoted to these three fund areas. The Classroom Mini Grants Fund was created to support all or a portion of any classroom program or project in the Wichita Public Schools that is not supported by traditional funding sources. Classroom mini-grant applications are accepted May through June, and applicants are required to tell us how their project supports our strategic plan. Grantees were surprised and awarded in early August, allowing staff the full school year to implement their innovative project. As you may remember, during the district's 150th year, each Education Edge Fund area committed to investing $150,000 into the district for a total impact of $450,000 for our students and staff. The Classroom Mini Grants winners recognized tonight are a part of that $150,000 commitment from the Education Edge Classroom Mini Grant Fund. Each winner was granted $1,500. There is a full overview of each grant provided in your pocket. Edred, I'm sorry, Ed recipients in attendance this evening, please come forward when your name is called. I'll begin with those recipients that were unable to join us this evening. Monica Gross, Robinson Middle School, predicting which types of habitats are best for increasing animal biodiversity. Elizabeth Noble, Little Early Childhood, meeting social emotional needs during screenings. Cynthia Panic, Woodland and Linwood, allowing accurate demonstration of art techniques. Guy Sturdavant, Northwest High School, maximizing student access and experiences in career tech, ed, and project Lead the Way programs. Sorry, I told you guys I was doing it at the end, didn't I? My fault. Ryan Williams, East High, fostering connection through esports. Bill Loudermilk, East High, exposing students to industry-standard culinary equipment. Jennifer Larson, Northeast Magnet High School, Magnet Day Guest Artist. Amanda Harkis, Horace Mann Dual Language Magnet, growth mindset through sewing. Tammy Gorges, Hamilton, motivating students through expanded classroom libraries. Sarah Wharton, Hamilton, with her project Lit. Michael Meyer, also at Hamilton, with his Innovation Nation project. Trey Thompson and Elise Kratz at Earhart Environmental Magnet, Prairie Library and Bookwalk. Kenzie Coleclasure, Southeast High School, ensuring access to marketing applications. Sarah Miller, Isley Traditional Magnet, engaging students with engaging text. Cameron Rhodes and Kim Williams at Caldwell Elementary, a macro intervention to reduce school absences and negative behaviors. Kimberly Hughes, Mayberry, maximizing new device usage in social studies. David Maneth, also at Mayberry, finding a digital voice in the digital age of communication. Steve Smith, Allison, increasing engineering knowledge through Vex Robotics. Jerry Weary, Northwest High School, advancing the technical field of theater through various stage designs. Boyd Teemitt, Southeast High School, a sandpit for J R O T C, P E, and counseling departments to share. Brooke Baldwin, South High, yoga for Titans. That concludes our 21. If I could get them a round of applause, please. Alicia or Stan, would you guys mind taking a quick group picture? Either Alicia or Stan.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Into the light. Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of the Education Edge Fund Team, I'd like to thank these grant recipients for their dedication to finding innovative ways to ignite learning and inspire students. Many thanks to the Board of Education for your continuous support of Education Edge.
Thank you, Holly. And for further information on this Education Edge, I encourage everyone to visit Wichita Public Schools' social media pages. There was a lot of good information about these awards this week, so check that out if you're interested. Patrick, next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry, we're still on good news, so.
We have more to celebrate.
You bet.
Last year, our S C I U, U T W, and the Wichita Public Schools partnered together to sponsor a voter registration drive, and we had they had a little contest to make sure we could ramp up people to have their voices heard. And so I'd like to invite Terrell Davis and Brent to come down and talk a little bit more about that competition.
President Reeser and Superintendent Thompson and board, we are here to highlight our voter challenge 2020 efforts. We entered into some some friendly competition, and I don't see S C I U here, okay? We entered into some friendly competition between S C I U, U T W, and the administration to encourage our staff to increase voter registration as well as voter turnout. And so tonight, we want to highlight those schools who have the most improved voter turnout. In elementary, it was Riverside Elementary with an improvement of 11%. For middle school, it was Wilbur with an improvement of 20%. And in high school, it was Chester Lewis Academy with an improvement of 17%. For the top school turnout, the winners were Irving Elementary, 94% of their staff turned out to vote. Wilbur Middle School, 92% of their staff turned out to vote. And high school Chester Lewis Academy, 91% of their staff turned out to vote. We all have also had competitions between the different sites, the I S C, the S S C, as well as the administration. And I'm happy to announce that the site that won that was AMAT, and we turned out with right of 87% turned out to vote. And then the big award, the group between U T W, S C I U, and the administration, I am happy to announce and to present to the winner. The winner was the administration with 87% turning out to vote. Can we give those all a big hand?
We're not going to let that stand, by the way.
We also would like the superintendent to come up. We want to present her with our voter challenge plaque. This has the winners for the top turnout schools, and this will sit in the superintendent's office, as well as each school got a traveling trophy, and we presented that at the last principal's meeting, and their staff was awarded donuts to show us show them our appreciation. So, Dr. Thompson, I'm presenting this to you as the winner for administration, and we're gonna take a nice little picture. So we want to thank the board and thank Dr. Thompson for allowing us to enter into this friendly competition. Special thanks goes to S C I U and their leadership, as well as the U T W and their leadership for the efforts to not only get our staff to register to vote, but also to turn out to vote.
We appreciate everyone's effort in this important area of voter turnout and getting registered to vote. Yes, Ernestine.
I want to say to all of you who were a part of that, congratulations, and now spread the word, this coming Tuesday, I believe, isn't it, Terrell? Is the National Voter Registration Day. I believe it's it's the 20-something, and it's on a Tuesday. Is that the 23rd?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
Okay, and so that I hope that those schools will get their 87 for the administration. Now, you really can do better than that. And so I really hope that we can get the rest of them this year, and maybe even on National Voter Registration Day, the 23rd of September.
Yes, I did forget to announce that we increased or we added 400 new voters to the voter registration voter rolls in our staff.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, Service Employees International.
I do not see ESAW, so we'll move on to the next item.
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Mr. Brent Lewis.
President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here with you. I want to let you know that our Back to School for All enrollment campaign is in full swing right now. Our members are out right now in neighborhoods across Wichita, and we want to thank the American Federation of Teachers for making this nationwide effort to invite students back to in-person learning in schools possible. We can report to you that we are seeing the devastating effects COVID has had on our community over the last couple of years. We are seeing eviction notices on doors. We are hearing of students and their families who have moved out of town or state for employment reasons. And we are hearing of students who have moved out of the area to live with their other parent or relatives. We are encouraged by some of our interactions with students and families who are now going to return to in-person learning. One young lady who recently had a baby did not believe she could find childcare in order to return to school and complete her diploma. We connected her with our district's community liaison office to help her get the support she needs to graduate this year. Now, it is no secret that the last couple of years have been extremely difficult for our community. COVID has disrupted the lives of our families and our local economy. It's been especially true for healthcare workers. Our school nurses have been no different. Our schools deal with all of society's problems and ills. They arrive at our doorsteps with the children and families we serve. During normal circumstances, our nurses are busy meeting the medical needs of our school communities. With COVID, many are now doing two demanding jobs at the same time. They report that the mask requirement is helping to fight back against the spread of COVID in our school system. Thank you for supporting policies that are meant to keep kids safe and our schools open for learning. U T W is continuing to advocate for solutions that will ensure that our school nurses can sustain their demanding workloads during this COVID pandemic. We appreciate the board and district administration's willingness to respond to the needs of our school health professions. Now, we recognize the strain this pandemic is putting on our entire community and the toll it is taking on our students, teachers, and support staff. We also recognize the tremendous pressure our school districts our school district is under to make up for learning losses due to COVID and to close achievement gaps to ensure that Wichita students are prepared for good careers and lives. We ask that all of our Wichita community stakeholders support the difficult work of educating students who are going through so much disruption and difficulty in their lives right now. Please support the school, support professionals who are working to meet the basic needs of our students when they arrive to school so they can focus on learning in the classroom. Please support the teachers who are working relentlessly to give every student the opportunity to learn and grow despite the unimaginable hardships some of these children are facing. In ever-changing and difficult circumstances, U T W will always be there for our members during their times of need. We urge the entire Wichita community to join us in supporting our community of students and educators during this collective time of need. Lifting up one teacher, school nurse, paraprofessional, or building principal lifts up hundreds of students right now when they need it most. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and we appreciate the ground, ground roots effort. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, public communications.
Before I invite the public speakers forward, I just wanted to acknowledge the topic of mask, which all have indicated they plan to speak about tonight. And while I don't know your position on what the topic is until you speak, I do want to acknowledge for all of you and for our audience in listening that we do not have an agenda item scheduled on this topic tonight. Even though we don't have plans to discuss this item at tonight's meeting, it is important to let you know that we hear you and will always value your feedback from our stakeholders on matters that are within the Board of Education's jurisdictions. I just wanted to remind you, you have a two, a three-minute time limit per speaker. You will see the timer in the lower right corner of the large screen in front of you. You will also hear a ding indicating that your time is up, and I would ask you to conclude your remarks at that point. One final, one final item I'd like to mention to all of our speaker, as you know, we do have a mask requirement for all individuals within Wichita Public School buildings. With that being the case, I would ask that all our speakers and presenters please wear their mask as they step to the podium this evening. If you are concerned about your ability to speak loudly enough, we will move or help you move, or you can move the angle of the microphone to assure that it's pointing directly at your mouth, mouth, mouth. We want to make sure that we hear what each of you has to say, and we do it all safely for all those involved, and we truly appreciate you being here tonight. The first public speaker is Matthew Farrenbaugh. And if I ever mess mess up anybody's name, just correct me when you get up to the podium. Is Matthew here tonight? Okay, we will move on to the second speaker, Eli Boswell. Welcome, Mr. Boswell.
You know, I was gonna come here and spout off a bunch of facts and data that support the fact that the masks do absolutely nothing. But as you guys sit up here in your little thrones like kings and queens, giving yourself awards for the good job you're doing, my kids are sitting in school not being able to breathe. The first day, first day, we put these masks on, my son came home sick. The other son came home with a headache, and you guys think this is just, what is it? Why? Do any of you guys have kids in school? Because judged by the age look up here, I don't say so. So how do you think that you can dictate what we do with our children? My family is not wearing a mask for the entire time of COVID, and none of us have been sick ever. Not one of us. So why is it all of a sudden that you guys tricked us into letting our kids come back to school for a week and a half and then throw out the mask order again? That was. You do not parent our children, we do. If we want to choose not to send our kids to school with a mask, we don't have to send our kids to school with a mask. You are not in charge of our kids. You are here to teach our kids, that's it. Teach them, nothing else. Their health, my responsibility as a parent, not yours. I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. And I I don't want to miss Matthew, so when I get down to the end, I'll see if Matthew has shown up. Our next speaker is Ms. Brandy Brown. Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing us today. I hope that all of you are ready to listen fully and completely. What you have absolutely done to our kids is wrong. It's abuse, it's neglect, and I don't know how you can sit in your chairs and feel good about anything that you're doing. Our children come home sick, they have headaches, they have stomach aches, they have sore chest from not being able to breathe, oxygen deprivation. If you don't know the definition, look it up. You're causing it to our children every day. It's not okay. And quite honestly, I'm finding it very hard to breathe right now, even speaking. So I don't know how you do this to our kids every day, all day. And if you have any hearts in your chest, I'm sure you could think with your brain and realize what you're doing is wrong. I sit here and listen to you guys speak of grants and scholarships and how convenient that these scholarships are given to children who are vaccinated. That would be discrimination, okay? That's absolute discrimination and unfair to any other child who is not vaccinated. And for you guys to support that, where is this money coming from? You now have money to give scholarships to kids who are vaccinated, but you don't have the money to give kids food all year long. You don't have the money to or the resources to give these kids what they truly need with their health and developmental status, but yet you're speaking on masks because if any of you are educated and medical, I'm highly educated and medical, and this makes absolutely zero sense, okay? If you're talking about health, this has nothing to do with it. This has every this thing right here and these shots have everything to do with you lining your pockets, and every single one of you should be ashamed of yourselves. Absolutely. And every single one of you should be ashamed of yourselves, absolutely ashamed. You should wake up every morning and think of quitting your job because you have failed. And that's exactly why you will not have the authority nor the access to my children because you have failed and you can't be trusted. So thank you for your little parade and letting the community know that none of you can be trusted with any children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Our next speaker is Robert Altergot. Welcome, Mr. Altergot.
Thank you. Well, my name is Robert Altergot, and I'm really here to speak about canceled field trips and masks. But first, I want to talk a little bit about representative government. We don't believe that any group is wise enough to operate without scrutiny or criticism. We know that the only way to avoid error is to detect it and that the only way to detect it is to be free to inquire. We know that secrecy and air... I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We know that in secrecy, error undetected will flourish. This forum is a step in the right direction, but it comes too late. Key decisions have already been made. Now I want to talk about stolen childhood. I'm forever amazed by the longevity of childhood, how it never ends, how we are what we were, how teachers and field trips and stolen kisses leave their jet trails across our gaping lives. What we do now matters, and the parents demand a voice. Mr. Reeser said that the board needed to talk with two people, the state government and local health officials, before making a decision, and then went on to say that his hope was that from now on that we don't start with the local school board. Go to your senator, go to your governor, go to your county commissioner first. I have two problems with this. Decisions made by the school board must include the will of the parents as one of the people in the discussion. That need to be... And secondly, if we have a school board at all, why do we need to pose, why even have a school board if we're going to pose these to bigger branches of government first? Government is best, which is closest to the people. Yet that belief is betrayed by local officials who engage in denying the right of citizens to be heard. Their actions serve only to assure that local government will be remote from the people, least representative of the people's will, and least responsive to the people's wishes. Childhood can't be stolen. Childhood happens whether we want it to or not. It's our job to leave the most beautiful jet trails possibles in the sky for our children's future. The welfare of people has always been the alibi of tyrants. Secrecy is the freedom tyrants dream of. You, the board, are not supposed to be tyrants. You were elected to facilitate and implement the parents' vision of our children's education. I'm asking you to listen to us. Our patience is wearing thin, and your refusal is costing all of us and especially our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Altergot. Our next speaker is Jeremy Randleman. Welcome, Mr. Randleman.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Just real quick before I start, can I make a correction? You had a union rep up here earlier that went on and said COVID caused this, COVID caused that. I'd like to make a correction. COVID didn't cause anything. Government mismanagement caused pandemic. So I'd like to begin. Like many of you here and watching at home, I too have kids that go to Wichita schools. And like every other kid, they once again are being forced to wear masks every day, all day. And for what exactly? There are numerous studies out there that have shown the risk of serious illness or death from COVID is very low among children. According to the CDC, for example, out of over 49,000 children under the age of 17 who died between January 2020 and now, only 412 died after testing positive for COVID. This is over an 18-month period, keep that in mind. For contrast, 434 children under the shortened 2019-2020 flu season died of the flu. If you want a better perspective, you have the 17 and 18 season where 643 children died from the flu. What am I getting at? Statistically, the flu is more dangerous than COVID to children. Which brings me to masks. If the flu is more dangerous to COVID, to kids than COVID, per CDC statistics, why the hell do we not mask up kids for the flu? That makes absolutely no sense. I'll tell you why, because masks are not effective. Cloth and cheap surgical masks, which most of you guys are wearing right now, statistically are about 10% effective. What protection? Studies have also shown masking children can worsen existing health issues, stunt language skills, and exacerbate anxiety. This probably explains why my daughter has come home several days since masks went into effect with a headache. I guarantee you, I'm not alone in that. There is no single proven study or benefit that shows masking children works. This is child abuse, plain and simple. There's no other way around that. My request to you is to end this masking charade, make it optional, like you guys had it two weeks prior. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves. And those of you that are up for reelection, I hope you lose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randleman. Our next speaker is Jeremy Payne. Welcome, Mr. Payne.
Thank you for everybody who showed up. I would ask all of you that are here, a lot of points have already been made. I'm going to focus in on the actual numbers and really question why you guys are deciding to go from what has everybody stated optional to mandated masks. My daughter Chloe is up there. She's missing a tooth. Luckily, I got her a medical exemption, and now you can see her smile when she's at school. I would ask, I would ask all of you to take off your Board of Education hats and for a second, put on the hat of a child like my daughter Chloe, who is up here. And how, ask yourself, how would you turn out today? What kind of Board of Education person would you be today if for one, or two, or your entire education, K through 12, you were required to wear this? These are numbers that are directly from the Cedric County website. It's funny that most of these numbers, they don't distinct why we're here today, K through 12. Everybody, all of these numbers are like less than 50, less than 60. Why is that? Because there's not enough numbers to justify this [inaudible]. We got 32 deaths, less than 50... Try to run through these quick here. Most of this, okay, so we got 758 cases less than age 60, most of those not hospitalized, 84% were less than 60 years old. If you look at this chart here, this is hard to see. So you have less than probably, going off this chart, the one that they do break down, ages zero through 19, the total hospitalized, and keep in mind, Wichita, for those of you who don't know, Wichita has like 50,000 students, 50,000. You're talking about probably 20 hospitalizations. Two deaths that I know of in the state of Kansas, two. There were more kids shot in Chicago than total deaths from kids from COVID in the entire United States of America, which is 214. I ask you, if you went to the casino and they told you when you went to the blackjack table, this time when you double down, you have a over 99% chance to win, would you double down? Would you let us have the option like how you started the school to take off the mask? Let our kids have a voice and a choice? And I implore you, do what you encouraged and bragged about earlier about all these people, percentages of votes. Let us vote if our kids can wear a mask or not at school.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Welcome, Ms. DeSpain. Sorry if I said your name wrong. Yes, okay.
Bear with me for a moment. Don't think I'm removing my mask. I have another mask on. Good evening, board, fellow Wichitaans. I have been asked, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I was asked by some parents to speak, and I believe in people being heard, so I agreed to do so. I would like everyone to consider everything I just did here. All the steps I went through for sanitizing, along with how I removed the mask that I've placed into this that says trash. At this point, you would think normally I would not have a mask on. Excuse me, I'm not used to wearing a mask as often. I'd also like everyone to think about if them and their children do those steps every single day and every single time your mask or their mask is removed and stored and every time they step up or sit down at a new service. If the answer is no, then we need to ask ourselves which contaminants or bacteria or viruses have we touched from inside the mask or outside the mask? And did we then touch our face or our children's faces or eyes or nose once it was removed? And where did we place our mask after we removed it? For instance, if we were to eat lunch, have we stuck it on a countertop, in a pocket, somewhere where it's now picking up more contaminants? If the inside of the mask is now contaminated and then we are initially going to put it back on our face, have we now recontaminated our face? I would also like everyone to think about how often they change or replace their mask or their children's masks, and how often they wash their reusable masks. Are they being washed daily? Do you have multiple to rotate through throughout the day? Are we wearing them as per recommended? Or are we wearing them around our neck, under our nose, dangling over our arm, or around our wrists? Have we considered that we may be struggling with tunnel vision regarding COVID and focusing so strongly on getting or spreading it that we are neglecting to see other negative health possibilities children and adults may be suffering from or may begin to suffer from due to mask wearing? And I know you're not supposed to touch your mask 500 times, so forgive me for that as well. We need to be thinking about social anxiety, acne on the face, strep, different things that may be affecting our children. I have a whole lot more to say, but I know I don't want to be rude and go over my three minutes. I will be more than happy to put the rest to the board. But I would like to say, do the risks outweigh the benefits.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. DeSpain. Our next speaker is Abby Kuchikov. And Abby, if you don't mind, I'll have you say your name again, so, since I butchered it so bad.
Kuchikov.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Good evening. I've taught in Wichita for 11 years and have been WPS proud since I was five. Try this: Go outside and play hard in 97-degree heat. Now grab your mask that fell on the floor, on the ground, and put it on before you dare step foot in the building. This occurring with filthy hands that have touched 27 surfaces in the last 14 minutes while you're sweating and panting with hands on knees trying to catch air. Worse yet, go participate in PE. It's downright dangerous to heat masks on while exercising. Isn't our number one priority safety in schools? Back when common sense was prevalent, masking a child while running and playing would have never been a thought. Students eat breakfast, students eat breakfast in the classroom. Wearing a mask after sitting next to one another while eating seems null and void. Aerosols have already been shared before 9:00 AM every morning. Students eat elbow-to-elbow and face one another at lunch, sharing the same air. Masking after being unmasked at lunch seems senseless. Exposure is constant due to ill-fitting, improperly-worn soiled masks or knowing the, if I keep this water bottle near my face, then I don't have to put my mask up trick. This concept of do what you're told, even if it's unjustifiable, is going to have a long-term negative impact on our youth's ability to become future-ready. The 259 website states that students from economically disadvantaged homes are exposed to 30 million fewer words by the time students enter kindergarten. Covering our faces will only support this setback. Masks are insignificant in elementary schools and get in the way of learning. You are asking young children to do what most adults couldn't do for a day. After our community was blindsided by the new business decision to mandate masks, I invited you all to my classroom to be mask police. Their precious learning time shouldn't be interrupted with constant mask reminders. If all I did was make sure they were worn properly, I'd never get through a lesson. Last year, I asked students 200 times a day to properly wear masks. Can you imagine how that cuts into receiving an innovative and rigorous education? I wore the mask, then got the vaccine because you said that would make the masks go away. Masks impede language development for all young learners, but especially for our hearing-impaired and ESOL students. Socially and emotionally, these kids are in desperate need of guidance. It's difficult to connect with teachers or peers when students can't read facial expressions. We need to pick up the pieces and rebuild our community. Kids need to see and understand emotions. Covering faces is hindering us from healing and moving forward with these scarring times. They need to see smiles. The board should not make decisions on medical choices, just as nobody mandates certain exercise routines or diets for you. The choice, the choice to mask needs to be in the hands of parents. Make them optional. Masks are filthy, chewed on, oil-slicked, snotted in, reused, non-medical-grade pains in our ears.
Abby, I'll ask you to wrap it up. You're over your three minutes.
On it. Give me a paragraph.
Thank you.
We will regret this mask mandate later, you will regret this mask mandate later, as your choices are damaging the development of our future. Social development, ability to deal with difficult emotions, and age-appropriate milestones are slipping are slipping through the fingers of our educational system.
Thank you, Abby. Our next speaker is Ms. Cory Young. Welcome, Ms. Young.
My name is Cory Young and I teach special education. I've been with the district for over 20 years. I'm here to ask that you repeal the mask requirement and make it optional. I'm not anti-mask. I'm pro-education and wearing a mask could be a choice, not a requirement. Access to education should not be conditioned upon wearing a mask. I've watched our students' education be harmed by inept leaders with an unwillingness to examine all of the evidence pertaining to forced masking. Last year, we all complied. We wore the masks, made kids sanitize with toxic chemicals several times a day, instilled fear in them, deprived them of all social activities in and out of the school building, and we enforced social distancing from their own peers. Teachers were told not to hug their students. We were to give air high fives and stay six feet apart from them. I spent much of my instructional time telling students over and over to pull their masks up. Mask mandates are hard to enforce with kids, especially my students with special needs. Talking clearly all day and breathing is difficult. Teaching reading to them, making sounds and learning words, it's nearly impossible with this. How do we connect with students when they cannot read facial cues covered up by a mask? Facial expression is the single most important part of communication. When I became a teacher, I vowed to advocate for my students to educate, empower, and protect them. We're already seeing the harmful effects of this unnecessary mandate. There's a decline in social, emotional, and language development. Students say to me, "I can't breathe in this. Would you tell the principal to let me take it off? And how long do we have to do this?" I don't have a good answer for them. It's challenging for our young children to follow these mask mandates and it deprives them of stimuli they need. According to the University of Florida study, there's 11 dangerous pathogens found on these masks, including bacteria, E. coli, and pneumonia. The World Health Organization has stated that prolonged mask wearing can produce adverse effects, such as self-contamination, breathing difficulties, headaches, and even skin lesions. The label on the mask box even states, "This product will not provide any protection against COVID-19 or other viruses." And we are forcing our children to put them over their mouths and noses all day. But I'm sure you all know the science. Surely, you debated it in private before your closed meeting in which you enacted this mandate. These children are in the lowest-risk population for contracting and spreading this virus, and we all know that. But we still tell them, "You can't play with each other like normal six- and seven-year-olds. You're not going to sit together at lunch and you must keep your face covered." For what gain? I say enough is enough and I'm here to stand up for my students and their rights. School board, your job is not to mandate medical decisions. Your focus and my focus as a teacher needs to be educating our students. Please leave health decisions to parents and their doctors.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Our last speaker for tonight is Ms. Sarah Clifford. Sarah, did I say your name correctly? Welcome.
Good evening, members of the Wichita Board of Education. I am here to urge you, as everyone else has before me, to rescind the district mask mandate. While I'm grateful for your concern regarding the well-being of my children, who do attend a school in USD 259, I disagree that the mandate serves any effective purpose, especially for the age group which has proved to be the least vulnerable for COVID-19. CDC data currently shows that only 412 people in the 0-17 age group have died due to COVID-19. In Kansas, only two deaths in the 0-9 age group have been recorded for the entirety of the pandemic. And even with the Delta variant, it might be more contagious, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's more violent. Children are not little adults. What may negatively impact adults doesn't necessarily endanger children. That's why requiring children to mask lacks any sense. Even as a low-risk mitigation factor, what benefit does masking actually serve? Only one study has actually been conducted and published to examine the effects of masking in schools since the onset of the pandemic, in Georgia, last November and December. And the benefits of masking were marginal. The difference between schools where students were required to mask and the schools where masking was optional, I should say, was statistically insignificant so far as incidence of COVID transmission. This doesn't even factor in ventilation and air filtration and combined with correct masking for staff and students alike. As has been mentioned before, not all masks are created equal. I was fine with the board's stance of strongly recommending masks prior to the start of school and I urge you to actually return to that stance if you feel that you must show that you're doing something. But the current mask mandate is too stringent as this district is usually the first in setting policy that surrounding school districts emulate. Please be the first to restore in some sense of normalcy for my kids. The gap between those setting policy and those having to live with the consequences of those policies continues to widen. Please help to bridge that gap. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Clifford. And I thank you for your time. And this board thanks everyone that came tonight to express your opinions on this matter. And, oh, yes, thank you. Matthew's here now. I'm sorry, you had to sign up before the meeting was over. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Education, every student future-ready strategic plan, increase certifications and college credit.
That's actually a very good point, sir. So, Mr. Barfield? Yeah. Yes, we're going to go ahead and let Mr. Barfield speak. I think I heard your name correctly. You have Matthew's time.
I won't take three minutes. And I think it was the first gentleman said, you can look at my.
And would you go ahead and state your name, sir?
James Barfield.
And move the mic up.
And move that mic up.
And you can look at me and tell I don't have a student in the school district, okay?
Go ahead, Mr. Barfield.
But here's my deal. I'm with Cascade Media and I have made several calls to the district to get an interview with somebody from the district to discuss this mask mandate matter. I am told that the district has made a policy that they don't want to address the issue because it's too hot. So my question is this, what is it that you guys are afraid of and why do you refuse to be open and transparent with the public?
Thank you, Mr. Barfield. That concludes the speakers for tonight. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Education, every student future-ready strategic plan, increase certifications and college credit.
We're having just a moment of technical difficulty. We'll see if we can get started here. Dr. Thompson, I'll go ahead and let you introduce the topic and then we'll turn it over to our speakers.
... opportunity to be here this evening to start some conversations and, well, actually not start, but to continue conversations around the work in our strategic plan. And so this particular item is built on our goal number three, ensuring the number of students that earn certifications and college credit. And by 2023, we want at least 70% of our seniors to graduate with a diploma and one or more market value assets. So that's really the purpose of this particular agenda item, is really to talk about that goal number three within your strategic plan and just go a little bit deeper than just the surface. And we'll do that, as he's going on, I'll just kind of explain. We'll do that at each of our board members, each of our board meetings in the future. We'll just take one of our strategic plan goals and then we'll dig really deep into that goal and allow the opportunity for the board to really engage in conversations around those, talk about some of the things, the challenges that we have within those areas and a lot of the successes that we have in those particular areas. And so I'll stop there. And I know he's still working, but I'm going to stop there and actually turn it over to my colleagues before I really do the whole presentation. So I'll let them have at it. We have Mr. Kelly Bielefeld, who is here, and also with Mr. Gil Alvarez. So gentlemen, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. President Reeser, Dr. Thompson, members of the board.
Gil, I think I'll just ask you to pull that up a little closer. Yeah, there you go.
I am Gil Alvarez, Deputy Superintendent. And with me this evening is my co-presenter, Kelly Bielefeld, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness, which includes our CTE programs. Tonight, Kelly and I would like to go deeper into strategic plan goal number three, which is to increase certifications and college credit and what that means for our students and our community. And I do want to remind you, you do have a folder in front of you as well that will have some flyers as we go throughout this presentation for your review. At the last BOE meeting on August 23rd, Dr. Thompson took us through a great overview of our updated Volume Four strategic plan and included our theme for this year, which is Ignite Learning. As we look at the pictures on the screen, we are reminded about our why, which is student success. Our strategic plan reminds us that we must continue to find additional ways to prepare our students to be future-ready through academic preparation, cognitive preparation, technical skills, employability skills, and civic engagement. Our presentation today will not only dive deeper into goal number three, but will share the roadmap on how we plan to prepare our students to be college and career-ready so they are successful when they embark on their post-secondary opportunities. KSDE defines a successful high school graduate as having the academic preparation, cognitive preparation, technical skills, and employability skills to be successful in post-secondary education in the attainment of an industry-recognized certification or in the workforce, without the need for remediation. This is why we would like to present tonight our Graduation Plus Plan, which lives in goal number three in our strategic plan, but is also connected to goal number one, increased graduation rates. We want our WPS students to be successful high school graduates and successful with whatever post-secondary opportunity they choose. You may be asking, what is Graduation Plus? It is a commitment, a commitment to our students, our families, and our community. It is a recognition that in order for our students to truly be future-ready, they need to not only graduate and to do so, having participated in future-ready opportunities that prepare them for post-secondary success. This part of Graduation Plus includes providing students with market value assets. And you will learn more tonight about what these assets are and how they relate to our strategic plan goal and our promise to our students and community. You may notice that the goal statement on the screen reads different than what you've seen previously in our volumes of our strategic plan. The previous goal statement read, "The number of graduating seniors who complete a rigorous career pathway or certification through CTE will increase by 10% from 897 to 986 by 2023." Simply put, we already achieved the goal, is why it is necessary to update our goal statement for Volume Four. The new goal on the screen reads, "By 2023, 70% of Wichita Public School seniors will graduate with a diploma and one or more market value assets." While the new language isn't a deviation from the intent of the goal, it does align with what we now know is most important about this future-ready work. What's stated here presents the district with a significant challenge that we will strive to meet and which will be key to the future success of our students. So let's review, also on the screen, the indicators of success for goal number three. Increase the number of students that participated in market value assets, which include work-based learning, college credit, and industry-recognized credentials. Increase student completion of rigorous CTE pathways and increase the number of students completing an individual plan of study to prepare for post-secondary success. This slide, you'll see, we have represented with gears. You will begin to see this gears graphic as we talk about the work occurring to prepare our students to be college and career and future-ready. You also need to remember two terms that are new to us, inspired by your vision in this plan. The first one is Graduation Plus and market value assets that Kelly will take us through here in just a little bit. You're familiar with the middle gear. And as you look at the gears, you can see they're all interconnected. And that interconnected, as one moves, they all move, is really what we're looking at when we try to prepare our students to be future-ready. So the middle is the individual plan of study. Additionally, we have steps or bridges along the way to post-secondary success that we want our Wichita Public School students to complete. These are the light blue areas, things like Avid, ACT and Work Keys, FAFSA completion, employability skills, scholarship applications, and CTE pathway completion. And our goal, as stated earlier, leads to what we call market value assets, which is represented in the gears as the green gears, which include entrepreneurial experiences, college credit, that includes concurrent, dual, AP, and IB, industry-recognized credentials, and work-based learning. These significant skills and career traits that will prepare our students into successful careers regardless of the path they use to reach success. My co-presenter, Kelly Bielefeld, is the visionary behind the work you will learn more about tonight. To say that I'm excited about where we're headed because of his leadership would be an understatement. Kelly understands the interconnectedness between all of these elements and in the College and Career Readiness Department, he is bringing our Graduation Plus vision to light to benefit all WPS students. So now I'd like to turn it over to Kelly, who will dive even deeper into those gears that you see on the screen. Kelly?
Thank you, Gil. We're going to walk through the first gear of Individualized Plans of Study and working through the market value assets. We could probably spend lots of time here tonight really digging into this. So this will still be, to some extent, a surface overview and we'll continue to come back with more data and better data as we move forward. So we start with the center gear that really drives it all. That's the Individualized Plan of Study. We celebrated our Copper Star Award just a few last month with you guys. And the components of the IPS that the state requires or that fulfill the requirements of the state are a graduated series of strength finders and career interest inventories that help students identify preference for career clusters. So students take, starting in seventh grade, take surveys and those sorts of things that tell them what they're good at, what they like to do, what kind of jobs might be suited for them. And they continue to take those as they get older because obviously interests change and strengths change. All eighth through 12th students have a course builder function and create a four-year plan for high school in eighth grade. And we're going to start. And we're going to start that next year where through our enrollment process, we don't just enroll for the next year. Students are actually looking at what their plan is and the future courses and prerequisite courses they'll need to take in order to achieve their plan. Next is a post-secondary plan. So students have to pick what direction they're going to head after they graduate from high school and then a portable electronic portfolio. So one of the requirements is that the kids can continue to log into Zello after they graduate and can still access this plan, which houses their resume, which has reference letters, scholarship applications. It really is something that they can continue to use as they move forward. So our goal is that students explore what they love to do, identify strengths, choose courses, and experience all sorts of career opportunities. So to give you an idea of kind of what this looks like on our end of things, I know it's a small slide, but you can see this is our total district numbers from last year. The number on the left, the 8,685, is all of our students that have a saved career somewhere in Zello, and then the 769 is those that have yet to save a career. So we're close to 90% on the number of students that are in this, that are engaged, that are using it. And then... This is all high school right here, so those are total numbers. Those, yeah, total numbers. And then the columns that are below, the left column is freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and then the seniors are on the right-hand side there. So we'll blow it up a little bit. This is just the seniors' data from last year. But you can see we get information on the top career choices. We get information on the top college choices. And this can help us to guide our work and what we offer and then what, how our CCCs work with, you know, different college admissions reps. None of the schools there, probably a surprise, but we have all of the schools listed there. So we can go to other groups if there's other places that students are interested in. So the Individualized Plan of Study, we like to, that's the center gear that drives the entire rest of the process and the market value assets that we'll get into. The next market value asset, or the first market value asset that we'll talk about are industry-recognized credentials. We report these to KSDE every year. Most of these are achieved through a CTE pathway that we have in place. The importance of these is that they're recognized by business and industry so that when a student completes the health science programming, takes their CNA and passes it, that's a transferable certificate that they can use really anywhere in the state. So instead of us just saying, yes, the student knows these skills, the certificate gives it a legitimacy and a level of rigor that is transferable that they can take with them. It also is true that the credentials that we offer, open jobs and opportunities. So I'll share the next slide here that gives you an idea of all the different certificates we currently offer. This will be expanded for next year, but things like OSHA 10 certification, food handler certification, Microsoft Office. These are great foot-in-the-door type of opportunities for our kids that they can put on a resume that gets them a leg up on somebody else that may not have that. Most jobs that people apply for want someone who's proficient in Word, Excel, PowerPoint, those sorts of things. So the fact that we have a legitimate certificate that our students can test and earn gives them that leg up. So you can see here our numbers, and the chart on the bottom does show a decline from 1920 to 2021, which wouldn't surprise us, most of our data, because of COVID. There were some challenges. But the big purple bar there is food handlers cards, which we require for culinary classes. So we did a number of those last year, but if you took out the purple bar, you can still see an overall increase in our certifications from 1920 to 2021. So we were able to do some creative things with, like I said, Microsoft Office, with some of our accounting software and with OSHA 10 certifications through our manufacturing courses. So certifications, credentials, this is one area that is going to be a point of emphasis for us as a district because that's the Graduation Plus, we want the student to have the diploma, plus a credential that they could take with them when they leave. The next market value asset is work-based learning. So this is kind of a general term that the state is using, but work-based learning encompasses really all things that are job prep or job exploration. So we kind of break them out into two different areas. One is a one-time work-based learning experience, which would be a job shadow, a field trip, a class speaker, those sorts of things, or an ongoing experience, which is more of probably what we think of when we think of work-based learning. Those would be internships, apprenticeships, or something you do on a regular basis with the same employer in the same career field. So we're excited to announce that we have hired a coordinator for this for the district with Perkins Grant money this year. Her name's Carrie Keller, and she is already engaging business and industry. We met with Spirit this week and met with Techtron a couple of weeks ago. And everyone from big to small in the community, we're looking forward to working with them. So this should be an area of expansion this year. Some ways that we're going to approach it, well, first off, to start with the data, all of our application-level CTE classes, which you might think of as like a capstone class for CTE, they all encompass some kind of work-based learning component to it. Some of those are an in-class simulation, like building an airplane, right? So that's not something we send students out to do. We're able to do that at the Future Ready Center. So it's simulating what you would do in the workplace. Some of them in our child development centers or teach and train pathway, we legitimately have an internship that students go and do, you know, as part of the class every other day on their blocks. So we reported all of that to the state as our work-based learning data, but we plan this year to expand it to more internships, to more apprenticeships, and have better numbers, so to speak. But just to give you an idea of one area there, we can share the whole list with you, but like our aerospace engineering, that's a work-based learning course. That's an application-level course that they use for the plane build. And you can see how our numbers have steadily increased in that. We offer aerospace engineering for the kids building the plane, but we also offer that in three or four other high schools, too. So they don't all get to build planes, but they get to learn the same concepts in those other places. So for this year, some of our goals, we're going to start in-house internships in the spring. What that will look like is our WPS students going and working with facilities, HR, media services. We've already hit up those guys. We pretty much offer every, or have every career you could think of represented in our district somewhere. So we're going to set up opportunities for our kids to, not only just job shadow, but to really go and work onsite with some of those people within our district. I think with the hopes of maybe retaining some of our talent here and hiring those kids on in May when they graduate, because we have trouble filling some of those facilities, grounds, maintenance, even parapositions. So we're hoping that it's a dual combination of supporting kids and their career path, but also possibly tapping into some talent that we have within our district. Next fall, then, we'll expand, and this is all, you know, with the asterisk of pending COVID, that we can, we're allowed to do some of these things. External internships and apprenticeships, so sending kids more to other business and industry in town onsite and let them get that internship experience. And any businesses and industries in the region, in Sedgwick County, can reach out to me or Carrie, and we would love to partner with you and love to work with you. The way Carrie describes it, we're trying to take, bring business into the classroom and take classrooms out to the businesses. So to really bring, build that bridge and have a connection with our partners in the community. Our third one is college credit. We have multiple ways students can earn college credit while in high school. We are working on, and we're about a week away from having all of our lists finalized. You guys probably know next Monday, September 20th, is kind of a big day for us. So we're trying to make sure we have everything squared away before then. And at that point, we'll share marketing's helping with us with some displays of what all of our high schools offer for concurrent credit. I believe North High offers 59 concurrent credit courses. I believe most WPS parents would be surprised by that. They would also be excited by that. And I think when you compare North High to most other people in the community and of our surrounding districts, that's a lot, lot more than what anyone else can offer. So WPS is a special place. We can do some of these things that other places can't do because we have such talented staff, but we need to tell that story better. We need to really celebrate that, all those opportunities. So here are the six colleges that we partner with. We offer different dual credit opportunities or concurrent credit opportunities with each of them, depending on the course. And then here is, this is not in every high school, but across the district, these are the opportunities that we have in each of the subject areas. So again, you'll see things like French and Spanish for concurrent credit. You'll see things like Physics Two, Physics One and Physics Two that just aren't offered other places. I mean, that's truly exceptional that we're able to do some of the things that we can do at WPS. And then our CTE college credit courses that we offer, too. I'm not going to read all those to you, but we have a lengthy list of, these are what used to be called Senate Bill 155. Now they're called Excel and CTE courses. So all of these courses, the reason we differentiate between this list and the CTE list is these are all paid tuition courses where students would have to, outside of ECA, students would have to pay for the tuition for these courses. But the CTE courses, all of these that are listed here, are free tuition for our students because of the Excel and CTE program funded by the state. And then our last one is entrepreneurial experiences. So this is another market value asset. Of the three, this is probably the least defined. And those other three, we've been doing those for a number of years. We haven't organized them this way to hopefully market and celebrate them the same way. But entrepreneurial experiences is where the application of the learning becomes real for our students. So some examples of this would be our school-based enterprises, the T-shirt shops that we have, the Landing at East High where they have the coffee shop. We have young entrepreneurs classes in all of our high schools. We have Market Day where the students create an item to sell and learn what supply and demand is all about. And then hopefully in the future, we offer a, based on the student's IPS, based on their plan, a self-directed project. We have 27 pathways, which is a lot of pathways, but we don't have everything every kid would ever want to do. So when it comes to something maybe like cosmetology or landscaping, you know, we have some courses that can help kids with those, but we also want them to have the option to learn the entrepreneurial skills that they need to actually go do that and not only learn how to cut hair, cut grass, or, you know, run a law firm, but also understand the taxes and the insurance and all the entrepreneurial things that they need to know in accordance with that. So the pathways are key. A lot of what I've talked about is aligned through the pathways. Like I said, we have 27 pathways in seven different career areas. And this slide represents our total for the year enrollment in these classes. So those are big numbers. We have a lot of CTE enrollment. We have a lot of kids in CTE classes. The only one of these that kind of has an asterisk is financial literacy because it's a required class for graduation, but the rest of these are electives and students are choosing to take them. So I will pause at this point and pass it back to Gil to kind of wrap us up.
Thank you, Kelly. Through Graduation Plus, we are looking at it with a different lens to make sure that more kids have these MVAs for the future. Our goal, 70% of all graduates with one or more market value assets, just to summarize, create individual student-focused data dashboard in 2122 so we can be focused more on how do we provide our students those opportunities to get the MVAs as well as a diploma. WPS pathways are avenues we can create to meet the needs of our local community, our students, businesses, and industry. But what students will learn about themselves and their career interests will shine through this Individual Plan of Study process. And we are here to help them explore their dream work. Key question we ask is not what do you want to be, but what do you love to do? IPS will help students understand what they love to do and how they can explore their interest area, whether within one of our 27 pathways or not. Before I take your questions, I want to touch on the fact that there is a great deal of data and work that falls within each of these four key market value asset areas. Tonight's presentation was not intended to jump all the way into any one of these, but please know we will be back to share more details with you as we walk together on this journey to empower all of our students to dream, believe, and achieve. So at this time, Kelly and I will take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the rewording of this goal. It's more consistent with what our graduation goals are as well. So that's really, I thought that was very appropriate. Ernestine?
To start with, would you, for the public that may still be watching, tell what CTE is?
Yeah, CTE is Career and Technical Education. So it's a special funding that we get in a special kind of a class. And when we talk about the 27 pathways, that's what we're talking about.
I just know that sometimes we in education use jargon. And it was months before I knew what ESER funds were when we said it. And finally, I quit my pride and asked somebody and found out, but thank you. Okay, one of my big questions, I'm going to ask a negative question first. How are we making sure that we're educating the whole person? Now, I need to back up and say, I'm one of the big cheerleaders for the CTE program. But how do we know we're educating the whole person and not just being a job training program for 48,000 future employees?
Dr. Thompson?
I think that we ought to hand that to Gil, don't you?
You can give it to whomever you want. I'll answer. Really, in all honesty, we have, children and their families need to choose. Our job is to prepare children to be prepared to make a decision whether they want to go on to a two-year school, whether they want credentialing, whether they want to go to a four-year college. And as children use those individualized plans of study, working with their parents and working with the school, they can help guide and facilitate those students in the direction in which they would like to go. Our job is to provide choices and opportunities for kids to be able to make those decisions with their parents and do the things that they would want to do. So we are definitely not in the business of herding kids down one path or another to become ready for the workforce, but they can if they want to. But they also could be prepared to go to college if they want to and be prepared to do that. That's why I really like, if you take a look at this Graduation Plus and you see all of these wills, there are wills for college. There are wills for kids that would like to go in to get some industry credentialing. What's really been kind of cool about the credentialing, though, is there are opportunities with Techtron and with Cessna, some of those larger ones. Kids can get the credentialing, go to work for these big companies, and those companies will pay for those kids to continue their education, to continue to go on and do different types of work. So again, it's all about opportunities for kids, but our job, again, is to help them to find where their niche is and what they really want to do, what they like to do. Because who wants to go to work every day and do something you don't like to do every day? So finding out what they like and what they're good at and then capitalizing on that and helping kids to get in those spaces where they need to, to be able to succeed.
That doesn't quite answer where I was headed.
Okay, but where are you headed?
Okay, and quite frankly, you know that this is one of my big cheering things for this program. But I'm wanting it said for the record, for the public that has expressed, what about the educated person? The English, being able to do English, being able to do, be the educated citizen? Are we making sure that we're not squeezing that out in order to head so much toward vocation for the future in the workforce?
Well, I will just say this, you have requirements for children to be able to graduate from high school. This is just on top of, if you see, Graduation Plus. So they will start out making sure that they have their four credits, you know, their math, their English, their social studies, their science, and they have to excel in those places as well. On top of that, people say, you know, we graduate, today, we graduate, 80% of our high school kids graduate from high school in Wichita. Some people will say, well, what do they graduate with? So they graduate with those high school credentials that they graduated from, getting the reading and the math. They have to have certain units of all of those things, and you know that. But then on top of that, what we're ensuring is that the kids that decide that maybe they want to do something different, whether they want to get some of these types, they're going to get some of these, too. So they're going to get a high school diploma with all the smarty stuff that you just talked about, reading, writing, math, social studies, sciences, those kinds of things. Plus, they have opportunities to get some credentialing here as well or some high school, some college credits as well. They're going to get their FAFSA completion. They're going to have opportunities to experience different colleges, explore different colleges. So they're going to leave with a lot, they're going to have employability skills, you know, what the commissioner was here talking about, you know, professionalism and all of the types of interviewing skills and all of those things. The kids are going to be able to have... The kids are going to be able to have those things on top of all of the other things that are required of them to be able to graduate successfully.
Thank you, I wanted that out because one of the things that is out is some people talking about, well, the Wichita Public Schools are becoming just such, if you want to have an educated child, you go to these private schools. I wanted to make sure that it was well-known that we, when those people that try to push for choice, that the choices we have are just phenomenal. We have the education that is one of the best in the, certainly in the Midwest, if not the nation. And then on top of that, we have these other options that make choices for families and choices for kids.
Okay, so did I answer your question, Ms. Ernestine Crable?
You did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one other question is have, are the local unions or trades interested in working with us for kids into construction trades and plumber trades? And are they working with us for inter, for not apprenticeships?
Well, Mr. Reeser and I just spoke about that. We have not engaged them. It is kind of, you know, obviously got kind of shut down for the last 18 months or so. So we're reconnecting, but professional organizations is one of the tools we use to find these work-based learning components. So we work with the Business Accountants Association and do an event in Manhattan. We work, I'm on the WMA Board, Manufacturers Association. We work with the Bar Association in Wichita here. So we have not engaged with every single one, but any of them that are, that are watching tonight that would love to speak with us. We have, we have HVAC classes, we have plumbing classes, we have electrical classes. We have those.
We have those classes so they could just.
Yes, yes, and so, and if they would want to engage with those kids. And the truth of the matter is, everything we hear is that people need workers and that the workforce is aging and we're going to need a pipeline and all of these sorts of things. So the time's good to be a, to be a young kid, you have lots of opportunities. And so it all, it all hinges on their plan, but we want to engage with those opportunities as much as we can.
I'm going to tag in, there's a group called the Business Education Alliance that we work with. And this is before we are able to take, we want to bring it to you first, but we will be taking these opportunities to that group, which is just a group of business leaders that are interested in having opportunities with birth work-based learning and experiences for kids in the, in the workplace. And so we will be able to begin to start connecting them through the Business Education Alliance as well.
I got confused when you were talking about that there were some courses that a student had to pay for and some that were free. Would you go back to that slide and tell me again what it, what you were meaning?
So for the college classes that we offer, so these classes, all of these classes that you see here, we have, our WPS teachers are credentialed to teach this class to our kids, but they can also take the class for college credit, the student can, if they want to.
Do they have to pay the tuition if they get the college credit?
Yes, so for all of these classes, these would be paid tuition now.
They can take the class whether or not they pay for the college credit, but if they want college credit, they have to pay for it.
Exactly.
Okay.
All of these credits are, I don't know what the percentage is, but around the 70 to 75 to $80 per tuition hour. And if you know what tuition rates are, they're not that, once you get on campus. So it's definitely a benefit. All of our partners are, have been great to work with us, friends, WSU Tech, WSU, and Newman.
And then that next slide is the ones that.
These are all the free tuition.
These are the ones that they can take and it's all free so that if they get certified in this, they don't have to pay anything in order to get that certification.
That's right, yep.
Okay, thank you. I'm finished.
Thank you, Ernestine. Ron?
Yes, thank you. I think my, part of my question was already answered about FAFSA. So FAFSA is there, is that's a requirement, correct, for entering any CTE or how's that working?
Do you want to fill that one?
Yeah, I can touch on that one. FAFSA is the, is the federal financial aid, which usually opens around October 1st. And that's for students that can apply if they want to see if they can earn some money to, financial aid to go to, to go to college. So anybody, we always recommend, and we, we shoot for 100% of our students to, or seniors to, to apply and, and submit their application for the FAFSA. I know our CCC's work starting in October to really try to get as many seniors as possible. We don't want funding to be a barrier. So sometimes those students that actually apply for the FAFSA or the federal financial aid, and they see that they actually have a grant coming back to them or money coming back to them, they realize, hey, I can actually do this without having to worry about getting a job or how am I going to fund college? So it's more of an application that starts October 1st. For all you senior parents out there, recommend when that opens for your child to go see our college and career coordinators who are ready and willing to help any, any student complete the FAFSA for, for any seniors that are ready for next school year for college.
Okay, but it's not a requirement, right?
It, it's not a requirement, no.
Okay, and also as far as the individual, individual plan of study, is that something that's strictly on a, on the database or something that they're creating? And if so, how are they creating that IPS?
Yes, we have a software program called Zello and most of it is housed in there. Zello is not the only thing we do, but it's the primary warehouse of storage digitally for all of their stuff. So every student has a, has a profile and they have a, they have a timeline on that profile. They can save their certificates, their transcripts, those sorts of things. And then they can go back historically and see, you know, oh, in my freshman year, I wanted to be a pro athlete and then I didn't make the team, so I had to change that goal. And, you know, now my new goal is this. So they could see historically what they've done over the years. We had an idea to see if we had seven volunteer seniors that would email you their profile so you can get an idea. To, to share an individualized plan of study, the data on a global level doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We, you really need to see the individual plans and what those are like to get a feel for all the things they do. Because it's really, it's pretty comprehensive. They have lessons that they do in there about the cost of college, the kind of lifestyle they want to live. You know, then how much money am I going to make, need to make to, to live that lifestyle? All sorts of different components to it, so.
Okay, so it's a much more deeper profile as far as their, their job wishes, their, kind of their wish list and what they really want to get into after high school?
Yep, that, yeah, it's, there's a lot more to it than just that. That's one component, but yeah.
And then how long after they graduate, is that all accessible?
Well, I believe they can access it for up to two years after graduation.
Okay.
Whether they do that or not, you know, we've encouraged them to, to download their resume, to save it to a Google Drive or, you know, those sorts of things too, because, you know, I, I'm not sure. We've never looked at the numbers and how many kids actually log in after they leave. But hopefully if it becomes as, as meaningful and powerful as we want it to be, they're going to want to keep using it.
Right, but it's there if they want.
It's there.
Right, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Mia?
Are there other certifications or college partners that you all are looking at?
Certifications, yes. You'll notice on there, you know, there's some things like ASE certification, which is for automotive classes. That's very rigorous and kind of expensive. So we do one through Ford that we're going to add to the list. We're going to add Adobe certifications to the list this year. That's one we haven't done much in the past. Our goal is to use the Legacy Fund Golf Tournament. Those proceeds are, we've been working with the Grants Department. Those proceeds are going to create a scholarship fund for credentials. Because some of these credentials, the cost of the credential is a barrier for our students. So we'd like to, to do, you know, Adobe Dreamweaver, Adobe Photoshop and some of those. And you can imagine a high school kid that, you know, has a credential in Photoshop is probably going to be able to go get a job if they want to or, or go to the four-year route if they want to do that. Healthcare, those are, those are pretty much set. But there's some other areas in the technology world that we're looking to, to expand more credentials to. As far as concurrent credit, I mean, I'm not, hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I feel like the partners we have are really good and strong. So we're just working with them to keep expanding what we're doing. Is that fair to say, Dr. Thompson, you think?
That is correct. And as far as the credentialing, we're really working with our individual schools to get teachers, to get the cred, the certifications that they need to be able to continue with the dual and concurrent credits. So that's kind of where we are with that. So we're, everything that we're doing here, we're at our base level, starting points with these things. And we'll continue to build out our work with each of the, of the wills.
Thank you, Mia. Cheryl?
Yes, thank you. Excellent presentation. I'm really, really glad to have this come before us because it is one of our major goals in our strategic plan. Part of this has been driven from the state level in the sense of wanting us to expand. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that that's true, yeah.
Okay, and, and just so that I'm understanding, we have always, for a long time, had college credit for kids that they could take and receive college credit. We've had a lot of our credentialing, the individualized recognized credentialing and the CTE courses for quite a while. But the two areas that are new or expanding is that work-based learning and the entrepreneurial experiences. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, I would say that, I don't even know the history, maybe 10 years ago, the, some of the funding changed that came from the state. So we used to do OJT or on-the-job training and let kids go and work. And they changed the way that that was funded, some of the guidelines on how that was funded. So that kind of went away and now, now they're bringing that back. I would say too, though, we haven't always called it work-based learning. But, you know, we have our Child Development Centers, our CDCs. Those, you know, started with the idea of our kids getting early childhood experience right there in a lab setting. Those started in the 1970s. So, you know, work-based learning is not new, but the emphasis on it and the, you know, how we're, you know, the way we're talking about it is a little new.
It's expanding.
It's expanding, for sure.
And sure, what I'm going to say a little bit about that is, is that while we've had all these things going on, there's not been any alignment with it. And so what we've tried to do is to take everything that's happening all around us, all around the, the district, and actually bring it together in a comprehensive way to be able then to tell the story, for one, make sure kids understand what's available to them so, and their families as well. And then to be able to make sure that we have data and things that we're looking at along the journey to ensure that the programming that we are offering is reaping benefits in student learning and outcomes for them to be able to leave and be able to do the things that they want to do. So really, this is more of a, of an alignment of all of the work and then enhancing the things that are missing that we think are valuable as we talk to our partners out in the community, the business leaders and listening to them, tell us what they're missing, what they need, and then us coming back and working collaboratively together with them to be able to build this comprehensive look.
And I think that's, I appreciate your saying that because I think that's the most critical thing, is that we now have a way to be able to tell people what we have and to explain it on one sheet of paper so that they can understand that, yes, we give graduation to students. We have our required courses that they have to take, everybody has to take those. But we also have these other pieces that are available in the Wichita Public Schools to our students. So, great presentation, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing data from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Ernestine?
Oh, thank you.
If a student is interested in a CTE that's not at their neighborhood high school that they would typically go to, do they apply to go to a different high school? How do they get the training at a, in a career area that's different than what's offered at their school?
They, they would apply for a special transfer. And I've been told by my colleagues in the secondary office, we always approve special transfers for CTE programming. So a lot of what we have, you can see on the CTE list, you know, a lot of them say six high schools, seven high schools. But we do have things, you know, the expensive ones, automotive, some of our, you know, manufacturing.
Engineering, perhaps?
Engineering. So some of those that maybe are a little more heavy in the equipment, we would, we would allow students to, to transfer and have, put in a special transfer for that. But I think to Cheryl's point, some of, some of what's been missing is maybe our communication, our marketing to the students and families to say, South High, you know, has a great, you know, fire science program. Northwest has a CNC machine and they're, you know, a great manufacturing program. Southeast has an ag program. So have, you know, and that's on us, and I think that's part of why we're, why we're trying to emphasize this is really get it out there and market it to families so that they know, really know what their options are when they're making those decisions.
Thank you.
I'm going to add to that as well. We, we had a student at Northwest that was interested in fire science and Northwest did not have that particular pathway. So they, they created in their schedule because he had, the student already had enough credits. So they, they made it enough in the schedule for him to go to South High and actually take the class. So there is opportunities for students in other buildings to go to a different building that may have something they're interested in. They may not have known they were interested in it until their junior, senior year. So there's definitely some things that we're trying to do to open the door to allow for students to participate in some of those CTE opportunities that may not be at their particular school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernestine. See no further question. We appreciate this presentation about this part of our, this important part of our strategic plan. And we look forward to hearing future reports about CTE. Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, consent?
Mia, do you have any consent items you'd like to pull?
No, I don't.
Julie?
Yeah, I'd like to pull C3 and C4. But I also have a question to ask about human resources. I don't particularly need to pull the item, but I would like to ask a question of the superintendent when we get to that portion.
When we get to that portion, then we'll have you ask that question. Stan Reeser, District Four, no consent items to pull. Cheryl?
I have nothing to pull tonight, thank you.
Ernestine?
I have nothing to pull tonight.
And Ron?
Yes, under bid C2. Future Ready Center?
It's just, oh, Phase 2, okay, got it.
Yeah, C2, under bids.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda except for C2, 3, and 4.
I so move.
I second.
Moved by Cheryl, seconded by Ron to adopt the consent agenda except for those three items. Motion carries 6-0. Julie, we'll start with yours. C3 Consulting Services, HVAC Audit Services, various sites.
Yeah, and can I go ahead and ask Superintendent my human resource question?
Yes, go ahead.
My, I, I know that since we've implemented our masking policy, that our number of quarantines have gone down considerably for both students and staff. But I am still concerned, what is, how is our situation going with substitutes? You know, I know, I'm sure we probably cover the quarantine situations, but I'm also concerned about staff that like need to take care of other family members or go to appointments or whatever the case might be that we have subs available.
I'm going to, I'm going to attempt to answer the question with accuracy. And if I'm not accurate, I have a colleague that will help me. All right, so we are having problems with substitutes. When I say problems, I mean that we have a fill rate of about an average of maybe 70% for the last probably week or so. 70% of the, the fill rate is filled, 30% are unfilled. So there is a concern. We are doing lots of things to try to remedy that. As far as continue to go out and recruit people to come in and substitute. We're actually looking at other ways in which we can use other staff differently so that we can continue to try to fill the rate. But we still stay consistently at about that 70% range of filled and 30% unfilled.
But we are doing some of those creative things like having folks in other positions go out and take subpositions and using caras and all of those creative things we did last year, we've implemented this year as well.
We have, and we are still, again, right around that 70% fill rate.
And then some, yeah.
And then some.
Well, we didn't have enough subs pre-COVID, so.
That is, that is correct. Hence why we need to begin to think about how do we, how do we think differently about that? Because we can't lean heavily in there if we know that that's going to continue to be a problem. So that's, that's another way, thing that we'll have to problem solve through.
Last week's onboarding class for new substitutes was up 12%.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. Okay, so to move on to C3 and C4, I am in support of both of Okay, so to move on to C3 and C4, I am in support of both of these items. I just wanted to say again that I'm really glad that we're being able to move forward with a lot of this HVAC work. You know, we've talked about for several years that our systems are aging and that we need to get some of these projects done, so we had a large approval at our last board meeting, now we have these approvals again tonight, and then, you know, I suppose we always have to look at the silver lining on the bad things, you know, the bad things, bad thing was COVID, but now we're being able to use some ESER funds to take care of some of these needs. So I thank Luke and Randy and facilities for working on these items, and I would like to make a motion that we approve consent C3 and 4.
Second.
Moved by Julie and seconded by Cheryl Logan to adopt consent items 3 and 4.
C3 and 4.
C3 and 4, thank you. And that also passes six zero. Next item is Future Ready Center by North High School Phase Two. Ron?
Yes, I was just wanting to find out, so, you know, as we just heard, you know, lots of great things going on there. Historically, the building, and I think a lot of, a lot of people were under the impression that this building was going to be used for a North, as a North High facility, and so I, you know, people in the community are concerned still about some overcrowding, some issues still going on within this building that needs to be addressed, and how we can work with the Future Ready Center, or how will that look as far as going forward with the center and hopefully alleviating some of the, you know, congestion that goes on and, you know, because we all want, you know, higher enrollments, and which means more students in school, but just wanted to get, get your take on that, Superintendent.
Yeah, we, we did some work to alleviate some, some, I don't know, I guess, alleviate some, some space concerns that they had, we addressed with them before. So that's why we took the area, as you know, where their swimming pool was, and we were going to be hardening that room up and getting it prepared to be able to make additional space for some different things. So we've done that work. I am not sure that there are any additional concerns that we have been made aware of as it relates to space concerns at North after we've done that, which has just here been recently. So what, what I will, can tell you is that we will go back to the building principal and visit with her to see if there are additional space concerns, and if there are concerns, we will do what we did last time, and we will work with the school to find out what those needs are, and then try to figure out a solution for those. But as of the last, you know, project that we did at North to give them more space, I have not heard of any additional concerns, but we can definitely look into those things and see if there's something we need to do additional.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Ron.
Yeah, I make a motion, we accept C2 under bids.
Second.
Moved by Ron and seconded by Ernestine. Motion carries six zero. I believe that concludes the consent agenda. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
Dr. Thompson?
I have none, thank you.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Board of Education Report and Requests.
And since I started at that end last time, we'll start at this end this time. Ron, do you have any items, reports or requests?
I have nothing.
Ernestine?
Always trying to undo the acronyms, would you please tell us what ESER is, Superintendent Thompson?
I'm going to have Susan Willis give me-
You don't have to tell the individual letters what they mean, but what are the ESER funds that we talk about that we're using for some of these exciting programs?
Okay, these are funds that are, are given to individual school, will give them to the state, then given to the individual school districts to be able to work on supporting our work through COVID, as well as to address learning loss that students may have encountered through the pandemic.
So we're using it in lots and lots of creative ways to catch up and to help through this COVID time.
That is correct.
And it's from the federal government?
That is correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ernestine. Cheryl?
I just want to give praise to the Artist, Art Association, and we had a celebration for a hundred and fifty years for us being a district this last Saturday, and we were all at the art museum, or several of us were, and it was a wonderful presentation showing the art that we have in our own district that has been collected since the early nineteen hundreds. Many of those works are on display at the art museum, and we should be very proud of that heritage. They had a wonderful video, and hopefully maybe sometime we can bring it and show it here at the board table. So thanks to all of the people that put in the hard work to be able to make that happen, and it was a great event.
Thank you, Cheryl. It was a great event, and one thing I, I learned at that event was Sean's, Sean's, knows every single Wichita.
You just now figured that out, Sean.
I, I think I already, always had it in my back of my mind, but that event proved it, so. Somebody has gone to something and done something with Sean in every single event I've ever been to, so that, so congratulations, Sean, that was a great event. Julie?
Yeah, it was a great event, of course, I have to give a shout out to the curator of the Wichita Art Museum, of course, yes, yes, yes. The other thing, though, that I want to address is, just echo thanks to our teachers that are going out and trying to gather in, students that have been lost, and I've, I've heard some of those heartwarming stories like Brent shared with us, and they're doing some great work, and we need those kids back in school. So, thank you to all of the efforts and the collaboration with administration and the teachers.
Thank you, Julie. Mia?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, new business.
See no new business. Patrick, next item?
Next item, adjournment.
Cheryl Logan, at large, I move that we adjourn.
I second it.
Moved by Cheryl, seconded by Ernestine for adjournment.
No executive session tonight, huh?
Motion carries six zero. Thank you for everyone for attending our meeting tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.